Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a work session this evening. We have two items on the agenda. The first is the 2018 first quarter report for the Convention and Visitors Bureau of the Chamber of Commerce. And the first presenter is Karen Hibbert, and she's the Director of the CBB, the Convention and Visitors Bureau. If you'd like to come forward, hi.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Good evening, Commissioners, CBI staff, public. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening. I wanted to give you an update, bring you an update on our first quarter activities, as well as a wrap-up for 2017. But as you know, our Steering Committee is co-chaired by two co-chairmen. Neil Farmer and Ben Siegel serve as our co-chairs this year. This evening, Ben Siegel, as our co-chair, is going to do the bulk of the presentation. I'm sure you might have some questions for either Ben or I at the end of the presentation. Why Ben? Ben's a very important part to our community and to the Steering Committee. As you know, Ben owns the Manhattan Running Company. But with that, Ben is very responsible for bringing races into our community and bringing people in that help generate that economic impact on our community. So, without further ado, we'll have Ben come and present the wrap-up of 2017, as well as what we have accomplished in 2018, and looking forward to the rest of the year. Ben?
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Commissioners, CBI staff, Manhattan community, for the opportunity to, let me make sure I get this, update you on the first quarter of 2018, as well as review 2017. As you'll see on this slide, in partnering with the Kansas Wildlife Parks and Tourism on this study completed by the Oxford Economics, this reflects the visitor spend of Riley County in 2016. The visitor spend increased from 2015 by 5.7 percent. Visitor spend in Riley County was 167 million, with nearly 30 percent of the spend on dining, nearly 20 percent on the lodging, followed by 19 percent on shopping and retail, 18 percent on transportation, and 12 percent on recreation. For the second time, 1.2 percent of the money spent was on second homes. Whether returning to the Flint Hills or returning to the Flint Hills, Manhattan continues to be a desired destination. For 2017, we had 354,618 visitors. That was a slight dip from 2016, as that was a high in the past five years, with 361, over 361,000 enjoying our community. Just to remind you that that number is derived from sold rooms in Manhattan divided by the average nights of the stay, which we use at 2.4, and then we take that times a multiplier of three for the day trippers, family, and those that might spend time in town that doesn't stay in a hotel room. And that is how we get that number of 354,000. The next slide shows us the Smith &amp; Travel Research for Manhattan, Kansas, end of the year. You'll notice that there was a slight dip in the overall occupancy, finishing up 2017 with 58.6. We also increased the ADR to $97.34, the RevPAR to $57.10. There was a decrease in supply and demand this year with the closing of the Motel 6, the Royal, and the Royal and Regency. Revenue's finished strong at 20, over 27 million this year. Here's another way for us to review the monthly occupancy over the past four years. As the year moves along, so does our occupancy. People enjoy getting out as the year moves along and the temperatures rise. This is the slide of the highest daily occupancy, Sunday through Saturday. You'll notice that we had, on Sunday, we had a big rise in the number for this year, and that was due to the solar eclipse. The next slide shows us the average daily occupancy. Again, Saturday is the busiest with us, with Tuesday and Wednesday beginning to move upward throughout the week. This shows our monthly average daily rate, continues to move up. 2017 had a nice little bump in it. Our average daily rate has increased. It's another way for us to look at the ADR, with 2017 bumping up $3 for $97.37. The monthly revenue per room, October through November, was our most profitable. The next slide shows us the revenue per room was a slight increase to $57.10 this year, or in 2017. Our biggest Friday, we've tracked not only the biggest Friday, biggest Saturday, but also biggest week. We wanted to make you guys aware of that. Our biggest Friday in 2017 was in June, June 23rd. That Friday, we had a 95.1 percent occupancy, and that was due to the Country Stampede. Our second highest Friday was 94.3, so just slightly behind, and that was May 12th for graduation. And third for us was October 13th. It was a football weekend, KSU versus TCU. And that was at 89.3. Our biggest Saturday, for us, it was Saturday, June 10th, at 95.4 percent. That weekend, we had Kandango, which is a bike ride. We had the Little Apple Invite, which was swimming. The Manhattan High School class of '77 was in town, and then there was baseball and softball tournament, and the Kansas VFW as well. Our second highest Saturday was April 22nd, at 95.1 percent. There was National Shorty Bulldog Championships, Kansas Professional Communicators, and youth baseball. And third highest was April 1st, at 94.8 percent, so just slightly behind the second one, and that was the KSU Open House. Our biggest week was June 11th through the 17th, at 78 percent. That week, we hosted Bike Across Kansas, baseball and softball tournament, Feast of the Fields, Juneteenth, National Festival of Breads, the Kansas Association of Airports, MHS Soccer Tournament, Manhattan Track Club Meet, and Manhattan Marlins Little Apple Invitational was that week. Again, that was 78 percent. Our second biggest week was June 4th through the 10th, so the week before, 77.9 percent, and that was Kandango, the Bar Association, the Kansas VFW, and the class reunions, and multiple sports events that we mentioned earlier. And our third biggest week was 76.3, June 18th through the 24th. So obviously, June filled that one up, and that was Country Stampede. Here is a video that we are going to run, I believe later this summer, the summer, right? So obviously, what we're trying to do there is tempt people to come to Manhattan and join us, and enjoying all of our great places to eat here in town.
What is that being, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
What's that being run on? Just the, just internet or TV or?
Social media.
Social media, okay, thank you.
We also introduced the Hello Manhattan video on January 11th, and that had 19,000 impressions, over 19,000 impressions, over 4,000 views, and 438 reactions, comments, shares. We're looking forward to running that one as well. All right, so next, moving on here, the first quarter of 2018, we had direct contact with 39 conferences, which resulted in 1,692 room nights, economic impact of just under $7 million, with over 7,000 people coming into town. In this first quarter as well, we had a nice bump in the Smith &amp; Travel Research Report through February. The first 12 weeks of the year reflected an uptick in what is normally a slower time for our hotels and visitor community. Much of this is due to the rotating conferences, as well as Fort Riley brought in a group that was here for a period of time, filling many of the hotel properties. We also have a continued partnership with Learfield Sports. Our third and final digital game as part of the Learfield partnership concluded in February with nearly 4,000 participants over the three separate weeks of the game. The game was a digital spin-to-win, as pictured here, that was available through Kansas State's sports website. We also partnered with Learfield on a Think Social campaign, which was conducted entirely on social media, and more specifically on Facebook. This gave Visit Manhattan access to K-State sports more than 100,000 followers. In this partnership, we asked users to tell their favorite MHK, holiday memory, or experience that they wish to have in Manhattan. One grand prize winner from Dodge City was selected and won four box seats to the KSU Baylor game on March 3rd, and a myriad of other prizes. And you can see there kind of some of the impressions and different things that resulted. We also hosted the, for the 29th year, the host, we were the host of the 2A Basketball Tournament, with over 17,000 visitors, over $1 million estimated economic impact. The Claflin Central Plains made history with fifth year in a row for the girls' team, and boys also snagged the championship as well. We also did something pretty special. Jackie Stiles, if you guys aren't familiar with her, is from there. Her dad, I believe, is the AD or the coach?
Coach.
Coach. And we did a Get Well card for her. She is battling cancer right now, and actually filled up one, said start another one, so we sent her two Get Well cards, and we have received, she was very touched by that gesture. We also have conducted several sales blitzes. Obviously, very important to continue to have conversations with meeting planners. January and February, they were in Kansas City, Lawrence, and Topeka. And I also was able to participate in a March phone blitz, which that was the first time for me to do that, and that was honestly a lot of fun. It's just kind of fun to see what they're doing on a daily basis, and to kind of reach out as someone from the community that's not where they come from, and let them know why I think it's important that they come to town. Social media update here. This was used in the fourth quarter presentation. We've included it once again to reiterate the mission for our social media, which has not changed. As we continue to expand our reach and grow impressions, we build more loyal followers who are then likely to engage with us through our created and shared content. By doing this, we increase our reach for impressions to draw interest in and attract visitors to Manhattan. This illustration shows the total number of impressions we've had on our three major social media platforms in the first quarter alone. While our following experienced a 1 percent increase across all three channels, the impressions skyrocketed. Again, the impressions measure the number of people that we were able to reach out and touch by just seeing our campaigns. This shows us that the followers we do have, and many we have gained over the fourth quarter, are actively engaged with our content. On our Facebook, we have more than 7,000 followers, and more than 1,400 on Twitter, and more than 1,000 on Instagram. Our high number of impressions are direct reflection of the increased engagement by followers. As more followers engage their friends, are able to see our posts through their posts and shares. I have a video here that I would like to show. Oh, this one, this one doesn't do it, I'm sorry. We're gonna have a little fun this year with tourism. Johnny Caugh's having a birthday, and we're going to plan some events around that during the National Tourism Week. We believe it is time to tell the story of Johnny Caugh and complete with a birthday celebration. Stay tuned for a complete list of the fun that we'll have on May 10th for that. We are also looking forward to moving forward with the Conference Center expansion. As we look forward, as we look into 2018 beyond, we must continue to address our meeting needs. Six years have passed quickly. Believe it or not, the time is now to expand our Conference Center. Expansion is needed, or we'd be at risk of losing conferences. Funds need to be set aside. Showing ROI makes a lot of sense to us, and let's work together as the CBB's talented staff continue to bring meetings to MHK with planners sharing with us their meeting needs. Got one more video here, the gateway to the Flint Hills. We believe the Flint Hills are compelling to tell our story of what makes our region unique. We published this video on March 21st, and in the two weeks it has been on, all of our social media outlets, the results are over 12,000 impressions, 726 views, and 69 reactions. On a personal note, I would just like to say that I think we need to continue to equip the CBB. I come to Karen and hear from not only our store, but from an event side. I actually, our timing business timed just under 100 events last year. We'll be doing about the same this year, and I think that's one of the things that really can drive people to Manhattan. And I think it's very important that we equip our town, equip the CBB to, so that they have things that can pull people here, whether that be the Convention Center, whether that be youth sports tourneys, and having the places that we can host those, or even just doing some of the stuff that we do and others around the town, and hosting events. One of the events that we time on a yearly basis is the Dirty Kansas Bike Race down in Emporia, Kansas. That one has over 2,500 riders, which probably brings in closer to 7,000 to 8,000 people, and I've been told by the race directors that it has over a $3 million economic impact to town. We currently, myself and three other people, are trying to do that same thing, because we obviously feel Manhattan has a lot to offer, and we're gonna try to bring an event like that to town as well. And it's the same reason why we brought the Bill Snyder Highway Half, which I feel like had a great impact on the community. And honestly, I don't know that we would be doing that event without Karen and Marsha pushing me towards that for years. They were always, always right there, letting me know that they thought we needed to do that. So, again, I appreciate you guys having me here, and we'll field any questions here now.
Thanks, Ben. He did a good job, don't you think? That's why we have him as a co-chair. Any questions that you might have for us?
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Sure.
So first, thank you both for all the work that you did and have done. I think we are seeing a lot of success in this area and the community, so I think that's great. Few questions. First, this is just, maybe, I don't know, but why did our, or could you explain to me why the average daily rate went up when occupancy went down? Would you have any reason to know why that happened? Kind of seems to defy the logic of supply and demand.
Why, why our average?
Why the average daily rate went up $4 or $3 when our occupancy rate of the hotels went down?
The ADR went up.
Right. The average daily rate went up, yeah. Went up just a little bit. Again, supply and demand, I believe, is the best way to answer that. Our hotel inventory has improved greatly over the years. Manhattan has a good offering of properties for people to choose from, so that would be a simple answer.
No, that, no, that, okay, that makes sense. So, the main media that you're using for advertising, I assume, is social media, correct?
Yes, yes. Those have been designed, those videos that we've been showing you. And again, if you recall the fourth quarter presentation, we showed you that overview of Hello Manhattan, very similar to that foodie video that we showed you tonight. Those have been made specifically for social media, so those are used for all of our social outlets. We are working for some television, which is very, very costly, but these are designed specifically for social media.
I think social media is a great avenue. How much advertising budget do you guys use in your social media campaigns? If you don't know that off the top of your head.
Probably not enough, would be the best way to answer.
And when you target those, do you have someone in your office who does social media full-time?
Yes, yes.
When you target those posts, are they specific to locations?
Yes. And our, we are very grateful, again, Commissioner, we worked with you on that of adding to our staff, if you remember, it was last year that we added a social media person. They have not been on with us for a complete year yet, but as we specifically have someone that can give all of their dedication and time to social media, that's why we are seeing a marked jump of interest and shares of things that people are talking about.
How are you, you said that the ads were targeted to locations. How are you prioritizing those locations?
Well, we know from our research, and again, we've been building, as to where our visitors are coming from. We know, and I'm happy to share with you, if you've not had that opportunity, to see the Randall Travel Marketing Research that was conducted about two years ago. Happy to get that information to you. From that research that was done, we know that our visitors come to Manhattan about six to 11 times during their time familiarity of Manhattan. So with that, it's different than if you were to, let's say, go to Chicago. You might go to Chicago two, three, four times in your lifespan. But Kansas, and Manhattan, Kansas specifically, has a lot of Kansans that drive to our destination, that come for a variety of reasons. Either they are coming for, because their student is here, because they went to school here, because business drives them here. So there's a familiarity that they have with the community. But the one thing that they're constantly looking for is what's new, different, unique, that they haven't experienced before. So as we do that, as we try and target those folks, as they are coming in, we are looking outside of Manhattan. We certainly are targeting those people that are 60 to 120 miles outside, because as you know, if you, the further out, the more likely you are to stay over. As Manhattan's offerings have improved, it also helps people to say, boy, I can't get it all done in a four-hour time span. I'm going to need to spend a night. Again, from our research that was conducted, as Ben shared when he was sharing the multiplying factor as to how we know how many visitors come into our community, on average, they spend 2.4 or 2.5 days in Manhattan, Kansas.
One, just an idea, and you might already be doing this, but one of the things I've seen my clients do quite a bit, was they used analytics on their website, their CBB website, to track the locations of people coming, and then monthly targeting. So we had a lot of visitors from this zip code, and then targeting all, a majority of their social media advertising that zip code, because someone came to your tourism website, is probably thinking about coming. So how do we sell that? So, just an interesting thing. And last question. Do you know of, in the Conference Center, have we, actually, I should probably just speak to this as a whole. Do you know of, on your level, any conferences that we have had to turn away because we didn't have enough space?
Yes, from time to time, we do have conferences that it just simply doesn't work. We all know that as our meeting offerings are made available, it's difficult to build a facility or to offer a facility that can meet one group. So I believe that Manhattan has done a really great job of doing the best that we possibly can that can fit their needs. Where we see a need, and when we had JLL last year present the possibility of the Conference Center being expanded, what we're seeing is a real need for more breakout rooms, but also the ability, if the Conference Center is expanded, the ability to host two 250, 300 size conferences at the same time at the Conference Center. Many conferences, depending on their size, some of the challenges can be not only breakout rooms or large general sessions, but also that of what your, what your trade show venues need to be, and that pre-convene area, how that needs to, how that needs to unfold. We are a community that brings an awful lot of agricultural-focused meetings into our community. Some of those meetings need large equipment. Some of those meetings, they just have chosen one not to have that as part of their trade show, or are being a little bit more creative in the way that that is. And so, again, as we talk about expansion, as we talk about how that funding could, should be, as we talk about the expansion of our sports facilities, we have to be very, very smart as how we do that, so it's the best to accommodate the majority of the people. Certainly, again, you're not building it so that it's just for one specific group.
Understand. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Yep, you bet. Other questions you might have?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I'm always surprised at how many events we do have in Manhattan, and it seems like a whole variety of them. And all the ones you mentioned for those peak days, Friday, Saturday, and month, had nothing to do with Fake Patty's Day or Country Stampede. So we do have more than that in Manhattan, Kansas, so that's always thrilling. And it seems like our racing events have increased, as well as our outdoor biking events, kayaking, whatever it is. That seems to be on the uptick the past few years, and I think that's partly due to Ben and his group, and I see a lot more of that. When the Linear Park Group came and presented with Viya Thompson, I see a lot of potential in that as well. So a couple of my questions. As we look at expanding the two gyms in middle school, for the two middle schools, one of the components we thought of was more competitive play for other types of events, whether it's gymnastics, I don't know if wrestling would fit into that, but other indoor things, not so many outdoor things. And if that's something we're planning ahead, I know some of those activities have two or three years ahead, where they're already thinking about where they're gonna be, and already have booked dates on their calendar. Is that something we're already planning? Because that's something we're working on. That was one of the key instigators for how we're going to pay for some of these things.
Yes. Marcia's not here. I was, it's, as we look at the sports facilities, I compare those very much to when we were at the point many years ago of looking at needing to, the possibility of bringing a Conference Center to light. First, there was research that was done, then there was a lot of face-to-face, a lot of conversations with groups that currently couldn't meet in our community. We are already moving forward with that, with sports groups as well. Yesterday, we entertained a sports group that, they had never been to Manhattan before. They did an overview of what Manhattan's offerings were, probably would be several years before they could bring a tournament here. So again, it's having those conversations, having those planners, sports planners, understand what's in the pipeline, and how they might be best be able to fit into us into the future.
And I don't know if we work with Parks and Rec or someone at K-State, but I do think we need to kind of move aggressively. Since the time Gail Urban came, and now we do have something that the taxpayers have given us the privilege of using, some taxpayer money to get these things up and going. So I hope we are, like I said, a little aggressive in how we pursue this, and have those meetings and conversations, and figure out whether it's cheerleading or gymnastics, or I don't know if it's, what type of cards or games people are into these days, video games or whatever it is. That's something we thought about for the Conference Center. But now that we have two gyms available, it would be great to have some of that going on, especially in the summertime when schools are not in use as much.
I can also tell you, just from my personal experience, my son, who's eight years old, is on a baseball team this year that we're, our St. George, Westmoreland team, who's gonna be playing in the Wildcat League. And the other big thing about that is not only just getting teams, obviously, from Kansas City or Wichita or wherever to come in and play here, but a big part of it as well is, we are gonna play in three machine-pitch tournaments this year, and two of the three that we're playing in, we're staying right here in Manhattan. So, I mean, myself, I want to give my son opportunities to play, but if we can play here, if we can provide good tournaments and good sporting venues here, I would rather just play here, as opposed to travel to Kansas City, which does a couple of things. We're spending our money here, in the tournaments here, but we're also not spending them on hotel rooms there, which gives me more money to spend within my community as well. So I think if you build them, they're gonna come, and I think we're also gonna stay. That's the big thing.
Right. And that's the way I see it. I just want us to start planning for that.
Yes, absolutely.
Instead of saying, now they're built, now let's plan.
Right.
I want us to do it kind of together. And also, I don't know how much, how you do this. So do people who are having events, for example, does Ben come to you with an idea for a race, or do you go seeking out events? How does that happen? Does a person come to you, or does an organization come to you, or do you think, hey, it's this week, on this particular month, let's do something together?
I think it happens both ways. I mean, but when we decide to do the Bill Snyder Highway Half, I think we'd probably, I'd talked with Karen and Marsha for several years, and part of it's just logistics. Like, we were trying to figure out how we could get it to work. Do we do it all in Manhattan? Do we do, you know, what we do? And then we...
And then we had the idea to have the Bill Snyder Highway Half, where it starts out and finish in town. Something else that Marcia has pushed for me, and maybe Karen even said too, is, not only them, but just our participants of our races, when are you going to have a marathon? If you have a half marathon, they automatically assume that we need to put on a marathon, which is very, very difficult to do, because of how long that is, how many volunteers it takes. So the Bill Snyder Highway Half alone takes 300 volunteers for me to put on. So if you think about a marathon, unless you're doing the same thing in town, and it's very, there's a lot logistically to think about. But we are actually, we have, November 3rd, we're going to host our first marathon here. It's going to be a marathon, a half marathon, half marathon relay 5K. We're actually going to have it out at the Tuttle Puddle area, inside the state park there. It's actually going to be a looped course, so that will help us with volunteers. Very beautiful route, six and a half miles per loop. It's actually, I was actually just talking to Karen about this the other day, it's on November 3rd. The other thing that is on November 3rd, this is going to be the Little Apple Marathon. The other thing that's on November 3rd is the New York City Marathon. So, you know, we may be able to play off of that a little bit, that both our marathon and their marathons fall on the same day. But all that to say, that yes, they have done a tremendous job with coming to me, you know, and I'm always putting on events that I know that we can do well with, and that are going to be successful. I'm always willing to take risks, the spike race that we're trying to introduce in September, we don't know. It may start with 200 people, but the very first year that the Dirty Kansha happened down in Emporia, there was 34 people. And now it, they actually do a lottery for the 25, 2600 people that get to participate, and they have over 4,000 people that put in for that lottery. So, you know, we're going to continue to, and one of the driving forces behind this bike race was also Marcia, who works with Karen. So they have done a tremendous job in always being, whether it's their idea or being the bug in our ear to continue to try to do those things, and I, and we appreciate what they bring to that, but it's also, you know, it's been a joint effort through, you know, I don't know what her, how she looks at it, but that's the way I've always felt it's been.
And I would agree with that, and where that area of expertise is, we as a Commission Visitors Bureau are those connectors. Ben is the one that really understands what to do to put on a race. We can help connect him with the people and those needs that he has to have, but to put on a race, and certainly, Marcia, her responsibilities are that of sports, she's educated well, she understands that, but she still doesn't understand all of the details of what it, what it takes to actually put on a running event.
Yeah, and I do appreciate we have great talent in our community. One of the things I'd like to see is, and maybe I need to try to do this or have somebody else do it, so K-State does some things in isolation, so this is International Week, and they have hundreds of activities going on, all kinds of festivities. Unfortunately, it's not publicized as much to the community, so I feel like we're doing a disservice when all of this is there. And maybe in the future, we can have some of those things that trickle also into the community, so we can have more at the pavilion or other areas, because there's a, definitely a certain variety and diversity that's also part of our community, but it's in silos right now, and it would be nice to have it infiltrate throughout the community. So, but great work, I like, I like seeing the numbers, and always want to see them larger, so thank you.
Other commissioners?
One of the things we always struggle with is the metrics that tell us how we're doing in any particular area, and I think that's still an issue. When we went up to Channel 13 two weeks ago, they had a chart up there on mostly social media, which kind of surprised me, because I didn't associate that with a television station. They had 13 million. I don't think they were likes, but they were hits of some kind. And, I mean, it's, it's, it's different, but it kind of caused me to ask the question, what does, what does success look like? In other words, how, how many is an appropriate number that we should aspire to? I have no idea. So, that's something that, you know, we may want to put a mark on the wall, and just keep, keep working towards it. The, one of the things I noticed too, when, when I see, particularly on the weekends, an advertisement for Come to Michigan, you know, and here they've got water skiing, fishing, kayaking, activity oriented, and then some facilities, like a lodge or something. I'm not sure how they picked the markets, and how they expect someone from Kansas to come there, but there's some kind of science that's doing it. So I think maybe in last year or the beginning of this year, didn't we have some, a video that had some venues like that? Where we showed the Discovery Center, or the Conference Center, and some of that?
We, we do have that video that shows our different meeting options. We have several, we have several videos that, I could do a video evening if you'd like, we'll bring popcorn and come watch all of our videos. But we do have venue options, so that people can choose. I think what I find very interesting, and to your point, Commissioner, you're exactly right, as you market and tell the story to others, there's, it's open. Gone are the days that it was only print. Social media really is how so many people gather their information, and that's why our videos have been focused on that social media. But I think what, what I like to remind our community is, our community is continuing to grow, and just if we were to take a survey of the people that are only here in this room, what Ben might find interesting and relaxing for a vacation would probably be a lot different than what I would choose. And so as you share those offerings, as Manhattan is sharing our offerings with them, we, we have expanded those offerings so great, so it's, how do you tell that story that you can pick and choose, rather than just saying, the only reason that you want to come to Manhattan is because of, you fill in the blank. I think it's also interesting when we look at our, at our data, at our information, I have been fascinated that for years, we always thought that there were, we always had, three big weekends in Manhattan, Kansas. Those were open house weekend, spring graduation, and fall graduation, and then as Stampede came on, 23 years ago Stampede used to be. But you saw from that data that we shared with you tonight, that football showed up one, one of those weeks, just one of those. Is that important to our community? Absolutely. But the point of sharing all of that information with, with the community is, there's a lot that people come to Manhattan for, a lot that they're coming to experience.
Well, the thought I had is that, I mean, the whole objective is to have things that are event-oriented, that we can plan for. In other words, when we lay out the year, we know that we ought to spread these things out a little bit, so we don't have three events on the same days.
Right.
Et cetera. And then you have, people are visiting family, and you're not going to do much to influence that, but it's, it's good. The other one was the one I was mentioning, which is, how do I get someone who's not familiar with Manhattan to come here? What images do I show to them? And that's why, I was going back to that Michigan, it's kind of, I don't know if it's individual or what it is, but I mean, it's enticing to think about those venues. What can I do there? Where can I stay? What can I eat? So this food thing, I think is, is an important step, but the, the inclusion of some of those other items, I think in a, in some kind of video is also important. I know Junction City's now got this fishing tournament coming to Milford, which is a great thing for the entire area, but those, that's another kind of event orientation. When, when Mrs. Randall came two years ago, one of the things that I, I think we were trying to do is kind of figure out, what are you coming for? You know, are you coming for an event? Are you coming for business? Are you coming for just to visit family, or what is it you're here for? So we can kind of figure out the current attraction, and then maybe track that over time and say, well, we're doing pretty well, we're drawing more people in, in events, we're drawing more people in, just because they want to come here, families kind of staying about even, those kind of things. But that's kind of the, when I was mentioning the metrics, that's kind of how we can check that. Ben, I just wanted to kind of follow up on another comment, and that is, maybe over the past five years, what have you seen in the way of growth in some of these running events? I mean, has it gone from 20 to 100, or 80 to 100, or how would you?
Well, depends on how far you go back. One of my good buddies, I don't know if you know him, is Marvin Hackmeister, he's, yep, 87 years old, and he has specifically told me in the past that he came up to me and said, I love that you guys are here, because I never used to know, there was only, I think he, I think he used the, there was only three events that I knew about every year, and outside of that, I had to leave and go other places, and now we have, I can almost run almost every weekend. Now, I think he was exaggerating a little bit, because we don't have races in Manhattan every weekend, but I would say that we have 15 to 20 running, and there's actually probably more than that, actually, there's, there's more than that, because those are just the ones that, that I'm directly involved with. And so we probably have closer to 40 events that, whether it be on campus, or if you count Fort Riley or in Fort Riley, or in Manhattan, that are just running anywhere from 5K to the ones we host. We personally host about seven every year that we put on, and we've tried adding to those, we've taken a few away, we've added a few others. There's definitely, since 2008, when we've opened our store, the number of events has exploded in a good way. Sometimes it's a little crazy, because you get two or three on a weekend, and sometimes that happens in the fall, because everybody always picks the bye weekend, or the out-of-town weekend for K-State football, because obviously they don't want to run up against that, but the numbers have definitely skyrocketed. I think it's a, there's good events, but we always know quantity isn't always what we're looking for, we're looking for quality, and that's what we try to bring to as well, and we've also tried to help the other races that are in town, whether they're 200 people or 500 people, make sure that the quality stays the same even for those, even if they're not our events. And so I think that's really important, we try to do that with, with the Snyder. I mean, last year, we were down a little bit in numbers, this year, we're tracking close to the same, if not behind by just a little bit. But one of the things that I've been trying to, to push Jim Moller on at K-State is to allow us to finish on the field. I honestly believe that if we were able to finish at the 50-yard line, the 1700-person Bill Snyder Highway Half Marathon and 5K could easily be 2,500 to 3,000. That makes a huge difference. But I also, I'm working with K-State on that, and they have to allow me to do that, and they've had construction projects, as we all know, at the stadium, and this year, May 1st, they couldn't wait till May 21st, they're replacing the turf, so we weren't able to do it again this year. So I think the type of the event is, is very important, and putting on quality events, but as a whole, the number of events have just definitely gone up.
Good. I don't know the reach on Channel 8, which is the KSU channel. Is it about the same as Channel 3, or do we know? I mean, is that?
I don't know. I can find out.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I don't know if people in Topeka get Channel 3, or why they, why they would watch it, but I, what I'm getting at here is, there, we have television stations, and we should reach out as far as we possibly can. I don't know about how far out Channel 8 goes, whether that's covered regionally or not.
It's local.
Personally, I can tell you, I mean, I think it's all, you always want to use all forms of media, but I can tell you personally that through the years, essentially, the only form of media we've used for the Bill Snyder Highway Half, we've had anywhere from 1,500 people to almost 1,900 people for that event, and that is 100%. The only paid media that we do is social media, and that's what's gotten that. We, I have not run a single television commercial, we haven't, I don't think we've ever run an ad in the newspaper for that, that has all been through social media. Now, the, the, Manhattan Mercury's helped us, they've written stories about it, helped it covered, which obviously helps, but I think, I like what they are doing with social media, because I think that's, that's where, where we're going with this stuff, and I think it makes the most difference.
These digital games, or these things that bring people into a venue, or these played from like individual stations that could be your house?
They were all on, on computers, they were all digital games, so they were all, they were all games that were played digitally.
Yeah, but I mean, were they each in their own home, or did they come together in a venue?
No, they would have been online.
On the phone.
Yeah.
Is there some growth in that as well?
Yes, yes. This was our second year to partner with Learfield Sports, second year for us to do digital games, and we saw that participation again increase. Again, that interest is that Kansas State athletics are far-reaching, you know, they can, I'd be happy to share with you what their information is with all of the states, the United States that have alumni or an interest in, in Kansas, in Manhattan, Kansas. And so we felt that that was a natural, because not every, everyone can come back to Manhattan, but still to find what's new, different, to feel like they're kind of at home, if you wish, has been an important partnership to have.
And the, the last one I had is, when, when do we anticipate coming back on the expansion? Is that, what's the timing there?
So we've had communication with the owners and their representatives, looking at some of the financial aspects of that, and the structuring of how that would work, and they have been open to those discussions, so I would suggest probably in the next couple months, we'll be back before you with some options.
Good. Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
I just want to ask one question on that, because I know everybody's talking about expansion, but don't we still have a half a million dollar a year debt for 20 years on the current facility?
We do. So that'll be part of, certainly, the financing, and the future financing needs to be a big part of that discussion.
Okay, because see, that's sort of a cloud hanging over then, as Commissioner Dodson said, he was talking about metrics, there really needs to be a good case made for where the gain's going to, going to be, when you still have that, you know, that, that huge debt hanging over our head, and we want to dig in with some more, it's going to be a real hard sell without some really great data on it.
Sure.
I just have a question for Eddie, maybe. You mentioned they're replacing the turf at the stadium this year, is that right? Did Ben, did you mention that?
KSU.
KSU.
Oh, yeah, the football stadium, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Is that turf we can use? Is that turf like recyclable, and we can use it instead of buying new turf? I would imagine, since we're looking at getting turf for some of our fields, because turf is so expensive, artificial turf?
So typically, AstroTurf has a longevity, and I, I, you know, I don't know the specifics about this, but generally speaking, if you ran the life of your turf like you run the life of your carpet, similarities, it's, it's lost, it's a lot of its buoyancy, and all those aspects. I think it depends on what you plan to use it for. Now, I think we've had some history of getting some of their turf for exhibits at the zoo, and places like that, where we're not looking for the safety components of it being there.
I was thinking if we can reuse it, and plus, their expectation is probably much higher if they're having competitive football games. Ours is not at that level, so I thought maybe we can save a few hundred thousand dollars on something, but just, just a thought.
We could certainly talk to them about different aspects where it might fit.
I'd like to have you order another Eclipse.
Yeah, wouldn't we? We would as well. I just think that's, that one just makes me smile.
I know, everybody does, except when it was cloudy.
Yes.
But, do you go out of the region or out of the state to market to your associations? Or do you go to the Midwest?
Yes, we do, we really concentrate on the Midwest. When we talk about partnerships, we have a strong relationship with Missouri Meetings, and certainly with NBA, the Animal Health Corridor, we really are seeing an interest in Missouri Associations looking at Manhattan. Again, that goes to Commissioner Reddy's point of how do you tell that story ahead of time, to entice people, tell them of what our offerings are. We also market with Midwest Meetings. Their headquarters are in South Dakota, but it takes in that entire Midwest region. We have a keen interest in, in interactions with those meeting planners, if you wish. We recently have, at the beginning of the year, Tony Ballard was added to our staff. Tony comes to us from Global Campus, and has served in the capacity as a meeting planner. So Tony is a huge asset to our community, to our CBB, just as Marcia is with sports, Tony is with meetings, and the fact that he understands what some of those meeting needs are, what those planners are looking, looking at. As Commissioner McKee asked, what do they need? Are we building it adequately, you know, is our, is our conference? they need? Are we building it adequately? You know, is our conference space adequate? Tony can really help address some of those issues. So we feel we're well-tooled for that. But again, feel that we are in the right spots in order to entice people that that's their main focus, is bringing meetings to respective communities.
I just know when I visit with people who are here for a conference, and this is their first time, or they wanted to come back because they just love Manhattan, and I think, you know, some of the conference planners are so, just kind of stuck with the rotation between Topeka and Wichita, you know, just whatever their traditional plan is, that it's, we can get them to break that cycle. The other thing is something I've mentioned before, and that is working collaboratively, collaboratively with the K-State Conference Office. They focus on the campus, we focus off the campus, and it just seems to me that we would be well-served to work together.
Yes.
And I would even like to see you provide their numbers in addition to the numbers that you provide. It seems to me we're only getting part of the picture for Manhattan, and, or the region, whatever. And I just think that it's to all of our benefit. We stress partnerships and working together, and I just think that there has to be, that needs to be done. And I know Tony has joined your staff, but I still think that there's good information and sharing to be gained from working together like that. I had the same question that Jared had about the ADR being like 4% up when occupancy was down. So you might double-check your statistics.
That comes directly from the STAR report, from Smith Travel Research, and that's all of our, all of our properties report. We are very, very fortunate. Smith Travel Research has told me countless times that we need to be very thankful that all of our properties report in. So I know that's not an error.
Yeah, okay.
That's the data that has been provided to us.
Okay. Are there other questions?
I might just add one small comment, too. Of all of the things that makes Manhattan very attractive, went to your point of conferences. This week, we have been hosting, it's called the Power School, and it's brought in about 150 people, attendees, to meet here in Manhattan. But they've come from multiple states to come into Manhattan. I was returning from a business trip this weekend, and there were five people from different states jumping on the flight from Chicago to Manhattan, utilizing our service to come to the conference center. And that was just really affirming to me. They were very pleased to know that they could fly directly into Manhattan. Again, a great asset, a great jewel that our community has, as people come for a variety of reasons. So, thank you again for the opportunity. Again, I appreciate Ben being willing to help deliver the message, and to be one of our co-chairs for our steering committee. So, thank you.
Thank you both.
Thanks.
Ben, thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, thanks. It's always good to hear good things about the community. The numbers look good, so we're gaining ground. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Street Maintenance and Safe Routes to School Sales Tax Quarterly Report. And Rob Ott, the Director of Public Works, is here.
Good evening.
Department Head, Director.
All good. Good evening.
All the above.
Good, yes. Good evening, Mayor.
Okay.
All right. Rob Ott, Director of Public Works. I also have Jeff Davis, our Street Superintendent, came this evening. And the intent tonight is to provide you a spring update to the street maintenance. Last year, we did this, I think it was September, or maybe late August. And I'd like to actually try and do that again this year as well, and where we're at. If you all remember, last year, April 1st of 2017, was the first date in which the sales tax began collecting and accumulating to go towards safer routes to school, as well as street maintenance. So with that, I'm going to probably have some repetitive things from last year, and I'll try not to spend too much time. You know, these are our three main funds towards, I'm sorry, towards street maintenance. The first being the gas tax, that's been our historic one. I've got some goals up there in terms of trying to spend 1.1 million. I've told you before, we receive more money than that in that fund, but that is also used for matching grants for improvements in the community that we've done over, you know, the decades. It also provides dollars that Jeff, once he consumes all the general fund dollars for concrete and asphalt, he then dips in about 120,000 per year on average, and consumes some of those dollars. The sales tax is something new, the special maintenance funds. Our goal is to spend 1.9 million per year with contractors on maintenance projects. Please remember, we also try and spend about 5% on the safer routes to school. And I do have some slides on the safer routes to school. When we put together the package, and the community was kind enough to vote for it, we estimated roughly 2 million a year that would come in on the sales tax, and 100,000 would be spent on the safer routes to school, and 1.9 on contractor, and then obviously, a general fund for pavement markings, as well as dollars that Jeff dips into. So, we also tried to establish, last year, and again, this, these are not, I want to be clear, these are not written in stone, but still, trying to have some guidance goals. You all seemed to concur last year. So the gas tax, historically, we've always tried to target arterials and collector streets first, and then local streets and residential. On the sales tax, we've got quite a bit out there right now for residential streets. But again, the dollars can be used on arterials and collectors. Again, this is just a goal. This isn't anything set hard and fast, but just try and work that. The general fund obviously pays for the crews' salaries, the equipment, and the fuel, and time, in which they react to not only snow and ice throughout the year, but worst-case locations. I recently sent them up to SUMAC to take care of some panels that blew up over the winter, that heaved and stuff. Last summer, I think K-18, we had to go out on K-18, Fort Riley Boulevard, around, I must say it was 15th or 16th Street. Again, we had heaving, expansion, things that we weren't planning on, but we sent them out. And I do do some asphalt milling and stuff, but my goal is not to try and, I guess, recreate what contractors do for the larger asphalt things. But we do do some asphalt repairs. So this slide is old. I don't know. It's 2016 data. I thought I'd change that. But this is all going to be updated when we do the PCI index. We have, I can tell you, we have more than 3.7 million square yards of pavement in the city that we're managing. The way I've always explained this to community members, just like you, as a homeowner, have a roof, you have so many square feet of roof, you have so many square feet of siding that has to be painted. And I just happen to have to manage 3.7 million square yards of pavement. That needs a little bit more than just replacement once in a while. Sometimes you can just use paint, or you can use other techniques. And that's kind of how I explain it, is that we're trying to keep that overall average of our pavement condition above 70. And let's see, one of the intents is, with working with the consultant here this spring and early summer, is that we're doing a big data push right now, updating our GIS, updating all the segments, all the new streets that have been added with subdivisions. They're going to go out and actually physically drive these segments, and that's where we'll get the physical verification in the field, that we really do have 3.7 million, or slightly more. So, that'll be updated in the fall. So, crack sealing. It's a technique that's been around for a while. We typically do it in the spring and fall. And the reason why we do that is when the joints in the asphalt are the widest, but yet the temperatures have to be such that the material will cool quick enough, so it doesn't track all over your car when you drive over the top of it. So it allows the crews to do a kind of a rolling technique to fill those joints, and basically seal them up, and keep that moisture out of the pavement, as well as the base rock. The crews will be out working on concrete panel replacement in these following areas. We tend to target them up in some of the student zones once they leave, but there's still lots of work up on Gary, and as well as, I forgot to put McDowell on there, but McDowell's got some work as well, that we need to finish up in that neighborhood, as well as try and get one street started up in the Berry Streets. And then we also have some asphalt, basically a two-foot-wide replacement right around the curb line. There tends to be deterioration at that gutter line with asphalt streets. And the equipment and the crews have gotten pretty proficient at milling that up, and then replacing that two-foot. And it kind of saves us money, because the other 70% of the roadway is in pretty good shape, and we're not milling up the entire roadway, and buys us another, you know, three to five years. So this is planned work. This is work that you all have authorized, and will commence this year. The first is the gas tax, and it's pretty much all primary asphalt contract. And we've got finishing up Colbert Hills Park, I'm sorry, Grandmere Parkway. So this will be the third phase of us working on that, as well as taking care of the subdivision of Colbert Hills Drive, and as well as the Heartland subdivision. We have Kimball Avenue, so yes, I know we have a north campus project. So we are starting west of where the college and Kimball intersection improvements will occur. And we will, we will go to the east, I'm sorry, we will go to the west, to basically Kenmore Drive, and then west of Kenmore to K-113, and I'll talk about it more here in a little bit. That's actually a Nova chip on top of concrete, and we've got some decisions to make in the future. Sheringbrook is another one, that we got some done last year, and we need to finish that up, as well as Griffith Drive, specifically in front of the school there in Northview. That segment is in desperate need of milling overlay. Contract wards for are the special street maintenance fund, the sales tax. Again, you all have awarded 1.3 million, and these are all concrete projects, and have all the different segments listed. I want to be really clear, we'll get started in the Northview area. We refer to it as the Berry Streets. We'll get started up there. I don't know if we'll get finished, because there's a lot of work, there's a lot of joint deterioration, but we will get the contractors started up there this year. You also notice that Griffith Drive, from 24 to Manfax, again, trying to make the entire segment good. You just saw a minute ago that we're addressing the eastern half, and this is kind of the western half just before K-113. As well as Claflin Road, this came from my crews, as well as some complaints. So we're addressing Claflin Road as well, from K-113, a reef, some concrete has deteriorated pretty well. So obligated or spent to date? So I've tried to list here, all the funds have been obligated. Doesn't mean it's necessarily been spent, but I've got, you know, again, the gas tax or longstanding fund, that's all the asphalt projects, just under a million. Now, this is general funds expended to date. So, yes, there's more money in the general fund for Jeff and his crews to pay concrete and asphalt. But as of, I don't know, I went to Finance Department when I prepared this, and they said 33,000 is how far we spent. If you remember, it's kind of been winter, and if you all could kind of fix the weather, I would really appreciate it. I'm not very pleased with how the weather's been lately. The other is the sales tax, which is here, again, the 1.3 for concrete, and then also the professional services for the payment index consult. So to date, we're about 2.4 million obligated for 2018. Obviously, our goal is to get to 3 million, and then produce roughly, not spend a million, but produce an equal quantity, if I were to pay the street crews like they are an independent contractor, another million, trying to get to a total of 4 million. I do anticipate later this year, going out to bid for another package, another round of streets. And I'm not going to promise it's going to be asphalt or concrete, or arterials versus local streets, but there's definitely some needs out there that have deteriorated greater this winter than I've liked, and I had them pushed out years, honestly. But I'm going to have to make decisions, because they are getting pretty bad. But we will have, and the other thing, too, is that we're trying not to outspend the revenues that come in. So that's the reason why you're seeing these multiple packages and some late bids in the late year, is because we don't want to outspend revenues coming in. And Bernie's staff is a huge help to me in keeping track of it. Hopefully, all of you have the bigger 11-by-17 of this. This doesn't do it justice. You can kind of see where projects are spread out. And we forgot the highlight, but we are working in the Sunset Zoo area as well, and I'll talk about that in a minute. So I'm going to switch over to safer routes to school. The safer routes to school projects, let's see, okay, this map shows both 2017 and 2018 obligations. The 2017 has been bid, awarded, and in fact, they have a pre-construction meeting. Came up pretty quickly. And I think I've got those highlighted in the purple. So anything that's a purple circle or oval are either sidewalk projects, or an intersection project that's been identified in the overall master plan. We work very much with USD 383. Got some great staff, and then when projects are more specific, work with the principals and on those designs and needs. And you can also see all the, I guess, Aqua locations as well, and those are under design, and we will go to bid this year. And I think, yep, and here we go. So, you know, right now, we've got some dollars spent on design and easements, obviously, building these sidewalks. And existing neighborhoods are difficult. And we have the construction, which is a ward, and then we have some more design for the Phase 2B. And we haven't bid yet. What I can tell you is that we are a little bit ahead of schedule, in terms of how much money we're going to obligate here by the end of 2018, compared to how long the program is going. Again, our whole goal is to spend 5% of the total amount received, and we'll continue to monitor that. But I continue to push my staff, because I believe by going after these grants, we're actually leveraging more dollars or coming back to the community. This is just our obligation. There's actually more dollars being spent in these projects and on these improvements than what's shown up there. And we'll continue to be aggressive as long as KDOT and their leadership will share those federal funds and make those grant opportunities. I'll continue to push my staff to go after them, and we certainly have some ideas for the next round coming up, hopefully this year.
Rob?
Yes?
I didn't see Ogden there. Is there anything going towards Ogden Elementary School?
Ogden is outside the city limits of Manhattan.
So even if it's in 383, and it belongs in the county then, even though it's part of 383?
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, the dollars, we can only spend inside city limits. Ogden, I believe, is, Ogden has some steps they need to take first, before they can even be eligible for safer routes to school. I don't know if they've even completed their Phase 1 study. I believe they were in the process of finishing their Phase 1 study, but they've got to complete that first, before they can then say, okay, now it's time for brick-and-mortar type projects. So I don't know that status.
I was at a site council meeting in Ogden, and I think there was some conversation about it. I know we talked about safer routes to school during that discussion at Site Council, but I'm not sure, like you said, where they are. I just thought some happened. Because they were in the school district, I forgot that it's not, city money can't be used in Ogden.
Yeah. Just as, let's say, let's say the school district builds in Blue Township in Potomac County. They have a site out there, like it's public knowledge. If they build out there, our dollars, if that's not inside city limits, I don't believe we can spend dollars out there.
Rob, I think it would be helpful, too, for you to show us and the community, when you get a chance, and this isn't urgent, but the amount, a chart or a... you get a chance, and this isn't urgent, but the amount, a chart or a spreadsheet with the amount of money that we're putting in?
Okay.
And the amount of money KDOT are bringing in from other sources? So that it doesn't just look like our 300,000 or 80,000 or whatever it is. I think that there's an extra punch with that kind of.
And I don't, you know, I always, when I talk about grants, that is not free money.
I know.
That is money that all of us have paid through purchasing something, and my whole goal is to bring more of it back to Manhattan than what Lawrence gets.
Well, I look at Juliet, for example, and the amount of KDOT dollars that are coming in in addition to, you know, what we're matching or contributing. So it's very telling, and it's such a great improvement to our community.
I can work on that for September, that's not a big deal.
That'd be great, thanks.
We also have maps, and Brian keeps a spreadsheet of every grant that we get, whether it's safety, transportation alternative, and we can find that and update that map as well. Rod and I actually talked about that the other days, updating those maps. So they're two or three years out of date, and they're starting to get kind of busy.
Yeah.
Okay, so, oh, I went way too fast. Okay. All right, so, street maintenance funds expended, so you all heard me talk about last year, late, we obligated just over a half a million dollars, and it was the first project that came out of the sales tax. And we targeted the Sunset Zoo area, Ridge, Summit, Oak, and all those streets. To date, they've spent roughly 50%. Oh, and don't let me forget, also the Blue Hills area was also included on that. So right now, they're about 50% through, and I'll show you some pictures. This is kind of a zoo area, this happens to be Ridge Street. Another one, I believe this is also Ridge, goes up, Summits running left and right. Forget this street, I shouldn't, I shouldn't do, I shouldn't. And then this is kind of the completed project, this happens to be Summit. Again, another one, just opposite view, I took a picture, standing, went left and right. And then this is Ridge, and they're working on that, and they have some other work as well. So, let's talk about these wonderful lists that always get me in trouble, trying to predict the future of how we should spend dollars and what's going to fail and have good timing. We're doing the pavement condition index study, like I mentioned, this spring, and we'll be wrapping it up this summer. I really think that's going to probably modify some of these lists here. This happens to be the sales tax list. Again, I'm trying to target, when you see things, I'm trying to hit entire neighborhoods altogether in the various estimates that we've put together, so that we go into a neighborhood, complete it, and get out. Yes, we're probably going to work on, there are some segments, there's only 10 or 20% of that are bad, and then there's other segments that Jeff and I have looked at, and they'll be 75% to maybe 100% deficient. So that's kind of how we've been kind of grouping things, but I do see this order changing. And this happens to be the gas tax. And I think I've got a good summary here at the very end, which is that the payment condition index values are going to drive our analysis here in 2018. We'll put it into a computer model, and we can put together different budget scenarios, and the computer picks. Frankly, I'm kind of working off a list that's two or three years old of what the computer picked, but there's still the element of us going out, looking and evaluating, and trying to make the best call. There's other things that are going on in the community as well that we're trying to take into account, like North Campus improvements and so forth. In here, my second bullet talks a little about Kimball Avenue. One of the things that I heard when I went around and campaigned and tried to sell the sales tax question was, when you make investments, make sure you make a good investments that's going to last longer than just the 10 years. And that's what I'm struggling with a little bit on some decisions for Kimball Avenue, basically Browning to 113. If you go drive that on your way home or anytime this week, you can, you can enjoy that ride, and it's a Nova chip on top of concrete with all the joints failing, and we're going to have to do something. I have it in the further years out right now. I shouldn't be addressing it, but unfortunately, Mother Nature had different plans for it. And we're going to have to, we're going to have to make some decisions on that, and it may push the priority for some other things. Our thing is, is you've probably all driven on Anderson Avenue and enjoyed all the water main breaks in the last six months of that old line that runs down Anderson Avenue, and all the different detours and the things we've had to do. Randy has in his capital improvement plan that we'll be debating here shortly this year, all the CIP projects. I believe it's 2019 he has design in and then 2020 construction. And Anderson Avenue, again, ride down Anderson, I encourage you to ride and drive this segment, enjoy the thumping as you go from panel to panel. If we're putting a new water main in and right away is tight, and I'm in the pavement, the question bag's what should I do for the rest of the roadway conditions? So those are some of the decisions that will happen. So with that, commissioners, I did try and keep it short this evening. What questions do you have to make?
I would like to mention the Kimball Hill as you descend by Blue Hills Shopping Center as being.
There's a long list.
A zone that needs attention. A lot of traffic right there, too. Could you go back two slides?
Absolutely.
I saw there the alley program for the next six years. And that's in the gas tax money for 2019?
Yes, so if you remember.
So we said we were going to repair. We aren't replacing. So is this the pave the alley project, or is this just repair some alleys?
Okay, so in the M-FRO district?
Uh huh.
I did a rating for alleys that were concrete or some other hybrid of concrete asphalt. It is not the program to convert from gravel to a paved surface. These are existing alleys, and again, if you want to go for a ride, I can certainly show you these paved alleys that have these high-density apartments.
Right.
In some essence, they've already paid for that pavement, and we just, we need help to start pushing up. Again, if that's something the commission doesn't like?
No, I just wanted to clarify whether it was, whether we're putting new alleys in or if we're just repairing, because there are some alleys that really have some heaves and dives. So if that's what we're working, you're repairing, then that's good. I'm glad to hear that.
The gravel alleys, as you know, there's two of them that'll be going to bid here shortly. That'll be for you all to consider. If you remember, one was a benefit district that was voluntary, and another one that we did by public hearing.
Are we, we have talked about and have never done anything about paving alleys when a development goes into a major part of the block? Are we, what are we doing with that?
Well, Rob and Bernie can, we talked about it a lot, and so the issue there is whether or not you have an ability and consensus of the folks who own property there. And so the issue is if the developer is doing, I mean, essentially, they, if they're doing one side of the alley or a portion of one side of the alley, they only really have owned the, they only own up to the alley, so they're adjacent to the alley on one side. And so is it, is it necessarily fair for them to do that versus somebody else who doesn't participate but gets the benefit and then comes along later and redevelops their property? So they didn't contribute.
I just want to make sure.
We never adopted a policy. We debated it, but we never adopted a policy.
I just want to make sure it's not the city at largest responsibility to provide an alley later because nobody wanted to and we let them do that.
So, and that's, that's kind of the example that we did the public hearing round, where we forced everybody to participate in the improvement of the alley via the public hearing.
It won't be long till they're all built, and we'll be too late. That's why I made a look at it.
You know, I think it is important that, you know, that alley was a good example because there were drainage problems. And so the folks that are, that are in, and one of the things we're trying to do is give guidance to elevations as people build some of the facilities so that they don't create future problems for us when the alley does get paved. We've had good participation from, voluntary participation from some developers who do their part, and others we haven't had, but that's a policy issue that is on our list that we should try to, try to work on.
So, just real quick here, I know you all don't have this presentation, but it's one that I use for technical data when I was doing the sales tax. And one of my goals for September, when I come back and brief you all, is to update a number of these slides again. I mentioned the miles, broken down in different classifications. This map updating what is asphalt, what is brick, what is concrete, what is gravel in the community. Sorry, you already know that. Updating and getting a new pavement condition index map and color coding it. Updating basically where are these different bars, how many square feet are above 70, and then breaking it down into the principal arterial, and what's the condition of that, minor arterial, major collector, minor collector, and then local street. And then just overall breakdown and so forth. So that's, that's really my intent in September, Octo, I'm sorry, August, September, to update you on those slides, as well as the overall system, current PCI, what's greater than 70, what's less than 70. This is actually updated, so this is past years of how much money we've spent of the special street and highway. Again, thank you to Bernie's staff for keeping me on the straight and narrow. This happens to be how much concrete, the crews repair it each year, going back to 2008. And then I have some updating to do on contractor and their costs associated with their work. This one, yep, this one's updated, and this is special street and highway revenues as well. So you can kind of see some years when the economy doesn't do very well, we get less funds and we have to adjust. So that's just a quick preview of what I want to bring back in August and September to you as well. Commissioners, Mayor, questions?
I have a few questions. This first one is a two-parter. So the very first slide on financial goals, so your goal in 2018, to make sure I understand right, the goal in 2018 is to spend around 3.5 million, correct?
I would say the goal is, okay, sure, I would say definitely try and spend 3 million on contractor maintenance. In other words, go out the bid, hire contractors for roughly 3 million. Yes, you're right, there's general fund dollars, there are general fund dollars here that Jeff is using for materials. So yeah, you're probably right, you probably already did the math.
So, okay, so, Tim, we have as another slide, Slide 3, 3.7 million square feet of pavement, correct? Is it, I mean, in my head, what I think about is less, we have a less than a dollar per square foot allocated for maintenance, is that a correct way of thinking?
Sure.
For one year, yeah. For one year, you have less than $1 allocated for, so is, is that an appro, is, I guess, is that an appropriate way to think of it for one, and for two, is that enough?
So, so when we, when we put together some of the budgets and stuff before the question and the ballot question, I did a bunch of different budget dollar amounts in the computer software. And if we told the computer, okay, keep me, keep the overall, keep the 3.7 million square yards, keep the aggregate average above 70. And I would give the computer a million, 2 million, 3 million, 4 million, 5 million. I gave it a bunch of different budget amounts, some of them were hypothetical. You know, I think we hit what I think is probably the best sweet spot in what we could get past and then what we received. Could we always use more? Sure, folks can always have expectations for more, but I think we're, I think we're on a good path, we're just getting started. One thing I keep telling everyone is, this is literally like year one, I mean, we just started April 1 of last year. Here we are, April 10th, and we've, we've got, we're just barely getting started.
So not thinking about the politics of the question, but just flat out, when you use that computer model to keep us above that 70, what was that number? Or do you remember?
Oh, it's, it's, it's between 4 and 5 million.
I think that's important for people to hear. We always talk about, I feel like there's, there's a national conversation going on, right, about how we don't spend enough money on infrastructure. So I think it's important to know what we as a city are doing versus what would be the perfect scenario. It's, I mean, there has to be some, I think we assume up on this board what the level of tolerance is, but we might actually be surprised what the level of tolerance is for people willing to invest in these kind of things, so thank you. On the, this, on the cost of these, on some of these projects, do all those costs include the labor costs? Are, are those, those are all contracted, correct? That's not city staff doing any of this?
So all of this here except for this 33,000, which is materials spent by Jeff and the four crews.
So that, okay, so that was my question, that 33,000, that doesn't include the labor?
It doesn't include labor at all. And I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner, or equipment, or fuel, or anything like that. That is just straight up concrete, asphalt, and other materials. Could be gravel, could be rebar, could be deformed, so.
So it's safe to assume that if one day we found a way to increase the amount that the city commission gave to the general fund for these projects, we would also have to assume an increase in personnel costs as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And one thing, when we sold the question, Commissioner, was that on the sales tax side, we said we weren't going to use the dollars to go purchase a bunch of equipment, go hire a bunch of employees. We were going to hire contractors, and we would scale the projects. In other words, I would adjust how many square yards of concrete we're going to fix based on the revenues that came in, so that we matched that incoming dollar, and I didn't have a bunch of people that I have to go lay off, or, you know, we'd have to increase the mill levy now to cover their salaries. And that, just so you know the history a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
So I'm sorry, you had another question, sir?
Just a couple more. The next one is, I understand how you prioritize what we do and what we don't do. How do you, how do you set the timing of what gets done and what? I mean, is that almost purely based on weather or what other factors go into that?
So, the computer, well, the computer model, I won't even pretend like I know the It takes enough, it does take in conditions of classification, because classification does include typically higher traffic counts, it does include more weight of types of vehicles on those streets, and there's some general parameters that we're going to set in there. One of the things that I've asked the consultant that's coming here is to help us, once, once he collects all the data, is to help us in our lucidity software to make sure we have all those parameters set correctly, so that when it spits out, you should go fix these streets, that we at least start with, I would, I would call them at least practical assumptions on our conditions that's applicable to our community.
One, I've brought this up to you before, but one of the things, I don't know if there's a way to do it, but I would hope that we could pay more attention to, is, I was leaving, or I was leaving a football game, and we were doing that construction on Caspen Road. And because of where police had said you couldn't go, people were following the detour signs, like the police had set them there before to show them how to get out, and I saw these people just driving circles for, I saw one van go by, I swear, four times. And I just felt, I wanted to like go run up and knock on their window and tell them a way to go. So it, just little things like that, if there was, I don't know if it's, we can have any part in playing and working with the university, make sure we have major events, we look at things like that, but just, just wanted to throw that out there. And the last question, so I've been sitting in at a lot of meetings related to the Northview neighborhood, and one of the things I hear pretty consistently from them is, a lot of those people in that neighborhood kind of feel like they've been left out in a lot of ways when it comes to the broader conversation about the city, and it's not related to any one particular issue, but one of the things that surprised me is how much is highlighted in terms of what's going to go on in Northview the next couple of years. How can we, and maybe this isn't a you question, but how can we do a better job as a city of communicating those improvements to people in that neighborhood? Or all neighborhoods in particular, like?
Sure.
Because I don't, I don't know if they necessarily see some of these things being realized.
So one of the things we've talked about in our budget book is highlighting geographically where improvements are occurring through either the operating or capital of budgets. And so I think that's. that's, that's something we've started to dive into. And through enhancements in technology, we're able to do that, that better. But, and, and I hear what you're saying. I do, I do think if we showed you what we've been in the last 10 years, I mean, we've virtually replaced almost every local street west of Casement, between Casement and Tuttle Creek Boulevard and south of Allen. And even before then, the water lines and streets, we just, you know, we may not have been in their neighborhood. But it's significant, the investment that we've made there. But telling that story, I think, is what we need to do a better job of.
Do we do any, on our own, social media platforms as the city? Do we do any investment in advertising? Or not even maybe advertising is incorrect word, but like boosting posts to make sure that they're seen more often than not?
I'd have to turn to my younger clients over here.
So we do a little bit. We typically don't boost a lot of posts for like these types of pushes. We try to do, so one of the things that we have talked with our public works director and city engineer about is how we, it's going to be important over the next 10 years as we use this sales tax to tell our story on what's occurring. So using social media, our insider, reaching out through that, using our utility bill inserts where we can. You know, we haven't done more for event-based boost posts, I would say, more for like the Discovery Center, Zoo, certain things like that. When we have major events, we'll do boosts. But otherwise, we try to do more organic growth through that.
I just, I, I, I think it would be even just a thousand dollars. That's tens and tens of thousands of impressions on, I mean, social media advertising is just dirt cheap. And to me, that's how we create buy-in and keep these things alive. Because I, I, if you, and it's probably true in any neighborhood, if you went and asked them, what's this, what's this, what has the city done for your street lately? All of them are going to be like, I haven't seen a city crew out here in years. They've never been out here. And we have to do a better job of telling that story. And I think the cheapest way to do it is social media. Even if just you guys, we do a really nice newsletter, maybe just pushing that on social media and boosting it a little bit to create a little bit more buy-in. So just a thought.
I think we tend to think of things year by year and rather than cumulative, what we, what we did five years ago or 10 years ago. And, and now we're having to do that next step. We don't think about that. We, and the streets and the sewers are kind of invisible. I mean, average citizen doesn't really think about it unless it's not working.
Absolutely. That's all I had. Thank you.
I would just add to that conversation that the community development department, I think we briefed you on, is developing a neighborhood liaison program among their staff. And they're not just going to talk about community development stuff. They're going to work with getting neighborhood information out to respective neighborhood areas. And so it's just another way that we have to, to be able to increase that and enhance that communication as we bring our annual bids up for, thank you, Mayor, on utility maintenance. The, the number of, the miles of sewer line that we rely on community-wide is, is very impressive. And so those are the things, again, we, we do tend to dwell on annual accomplishments as opposed to decade accomplishments.
When will you unveil your neighborhood plan?
When are we going to do that, Eric?
We've heard about it for, I don't know, a couple of months.
In the near future.
Okay, all right.
And, and just to let you know, we did have a meeting, the city engineer and my staff went to a meeting of that Northview Working Group. It's kind of a loose group. And we talked about all these public infrastructure improvements that are coming along this year. This year, there are going to be three projects that will provide access across Tuttle Creek Boulevard into the Northview area. One down, we call it the Old Blue River Trail connection down by McCall Road. And there'll be a crossing of Tuttle Creek Boulevard at McCall for bicycle and pedestrian. And it will connect up to the curve of Casement Road. And there's the one at Kimball Avenue that will cross Tuttle Creek Boulevard. And then there's the, the connection under, on Marlet Avenue, there's that existing underpass. And it will connect into that whole Denison Avenue project that the city and county is doing. So there'll be three new ways to cross Tuttle Creek Boulevard from that whole Northview area. And that will be all constructed this year.
Yeah. And some of the, some of those same residents gave, gave me a lot of positive feedback at that point. So I, I think that's a great step in the right direction. But there are still thousands of people who don't attend meetings like that, right? And we'll never know that those things are going on. We have a really cheap way through social media to push the word out a little bit further. So particularly, and then maybe if this is a conversation that we need to have on a broader scale, I would like to see the city put a little bit more money behind pushing some of that information out there a little bit. Because one of the things I heard a lot when I went and knocked on doors was just, what is the city doing right now? What are, you know, we would have conversations about debt. Well, what was that money spent on? And there's, it's not even necessarily, I don't want to pay that mu- much in taxes, but I don't really understand what my taxes are going towards. And if we can find a better way to push that out, that, that to me would be preferable. In the past, we couldn't do it. Sending a letter to everybody, it's really expensive, right? Putting TVs out is expensive. We live in a new world now. So I don't think it's unrealistic for us to think about investing a little bit more there. Thank you.
We need to mention the Allen Road project too. And the reason we haven't done it for 35 years is because it was going to be so expensive and it's just about finished.
It's getting closer. It's getting closer. Commissioner Butler?
Yeah, just gonna, just gonna comment. You did a great job explaining the, about the brick streets. We were talking about social media and I see a lot of stuff the city puts out there, the insider. You did a post today on flood control, the fact that we got a little bit of a discount. And what I tend to do is, you know, you got that Nextdoor, everybody seems to be on that. And I've got a couple of other little websites I deal with and I just cross-post all that stuff. And I know your, your post on the brick streets got a lot of a conversation on, on, on a Facebook account. But you did a great job of explaining all the wannabe engineers out there, as I call them, that, you know, think they know more than the guys actually working on the street and did a great job of explaining that. And the other comment I want to make was, you know, we look at this, this, this big picture, this street program that we've worked on for a couple of years and the sales tax got passed. This, this is really a good project because the plan, you know, is now being executed. And the interesting thing is, you know, the two pieces I see going forward, you, you've got the pavement survey guy coming with his high-speed truck and he's going to find a bunch of stuff you can't see by just looking at it. And the end result of that's going to be, you're going to have to reprioritize some of the things you've given us here. And that will, you know, some people will look at that and get a little bit aggravated. But, but that's how we're going to get best value out of the, out of the dollars. And then as I look at the big picture, sure, it'd be nice if we could put eight million dollars on the streets. But we tried to get best value for the city. We came up with a figure of around four million, three different sources. And, and I think you've done about as good a job as anybody could possibly do on putting that together. And I've always been big on priorities. And I'll tell you what, when you set priorities, you always take some hits because somebody's priority is not going to be number one. And, and I just appreciate the effort the staff has done on that because it's a, it's a tough one.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I think, thanks for the update. I think anytime taxpayers have an option to opt out, out of voting for something and they opted in for this, to raise the sales tax for this initiative, it's very important to update them on how you're spending it and how we're looking at each, each issue, especially with street maintenance. I think that's what we get a lot of emails about. And even if we don't get emails, that's what we feel when we're around town, that they should do this or they should do this. And I'm glad that the, you mentioned not wanting to outspend what's coming in. And I think that's very key to this. So that we don't go over budget. We have a lot of areas in town that need a lot of work and prioritizing is key. The other thing is, when we're, when we are prioritizing and you're looking at those C, I want to say CIP, but PCI values, I, I want to be cautious that we're being equitable in which areas, kind of like what Northview or whatever it is, sometimes older neighborhoods or newer neighborhoods might get overlooked or looked at too much because of the traffic that they're going through. But again, we had a great majority of our taxpayers approve this, hoping that their streets will also be part of that fixer-upper deal. So I want to make sure we're using that. I'm looking at all areas of our, of Manhattan. Let me see. I, I do like the way the safe routes to school is going. And I, like you said, I don't know where blue township will fall into all of this. But we just heard Ben and CBB say about all these events that are going on. So we are promoting more outdoor things, walking, biking, jogging, whatever it might be. And anytime I talk to Jared AAA or anybody else, they're talking about more people using their bikes to school or walking. So this is very critical, especially for, in my opinion, physical, emotional, and mental wellbeing and making sure they have those safe routes to school. When we talk about those routes, we don't need to think about cameras or anything. This is just mainly infrastructure as far as sidewalks. Is that right?
Yes.
I think so. Okay. And I like, I like the work you're doing. I think it's a, a very challenging project, especially because we have so many smaller roads that we never drive through, but we know they're also being impacted. And I just want to make sure we're looking at every single detail. A lot of them voted for this. So thank you.
To one of your comments about, you know, sometimes why do some new subdivisions get addressed before an older one? Because sometime, and I won't pull out my, my data curves of when we should try and hit certain types of maintenance, maintenance activities. Some things, and I, I thought I goofed up, but I found it in my memo, there's definitely some areas out there that I know, like on asphalt streets, that, that 10 to 12 years, maybe even 15 years, maybe in, in some of the residential subdivisions, I'm going to have to mill and overlay it. We haven't even paid the specials off. That's just the nature of asphalt. But it's a lot cheaper if I do it before it gets into the entire pavement and gets into the base. So that is some of the frustration when you put it in the computer program, the computer says, you know, you can fix a lot of square yards and get it to a hundred percent or to a hundred in PCI, really bring up that aggregate average for, for a low cost. So those are, those are tough sometimes. But yes, we do look at a lot of streets. You know, one thing that we've started since Jeff has taken over, we have all the crew leaders now. We had our, I guess, our annual meeting, what was it, February, Jeff, timeframe? So we have all the crew leaders that come in. Those guys are out on the streets every single day. And, and we, I take their input too. Just because what a computer tells me doesn't necessarily mean that's exactly what we're going to do. I try and get some ground truthing from these guys and the phone calls. I don't get all the phone calls. Jeff and his staff really take the brunt of those phone calls. But that's the only thing I wanted to add. On the safe routes, the school stuff, you know, like the Juliet Brick Phase Three, I will tell you, as part of the grant, there's a bus drop-off that KDOTs agreed to help pay for. And we've been working with USD 383. We're designing that one in-house. And we'll continue to try and leverage and partner with the school district. And Michelle, I forget her, Jones, been excellent to work with her and Eric as well. Eric's been very excellent to work with. And we'll continue to try and make sure we meet their needs. Commissioner Dawson?
Yeah, the, when we first started, we had about a million going internal and a million going external. And we're only showing material costs, but I just want to make sure we're still at about a million level internal on mostly concrete work. Is that right?
So if I were to take, I'm going to go to the slide that I'll show you in September. So if I was to take this, these quantities, these quantities that the, the street crews have repaired, and if I were to go back into budgets of what we spent with a contractor, a cost per square yard, that's, that's another slide that I can put together. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get another million dollars worth of value. Because in the computer software, I've, I've got to, I've got to set a number for that cost of a square yard to fix. So the answer is yes, Commissioner. Sorry, that's a long answer. Oh.
The other one, when we do the PCI, I just want to make sure that the ones we're doing this year before the PCI, we're pretty sure of condition underneath. Is, is that a fair statement? The other one is the grand mirror. You know, we've still got a lot of construction going on up in there. And that's one of the things that caused the rapid decay of the current roadway. So if, if there's a way to bring the guys in from Seth Giles across the top, because that's where most of the construction going, that would be beneficial. Because right now, we're just going to put down brand-new asphalt or concrete and then we're going to run trucks over it. So it's kind of the same approach we use on INBAF. We want to fix that before we get the trucks over. When you had the, the slide on cost, something you said later caused me to ask the question again. But when you do cost, you know, it's not just the current cost of concrete, not just the current cost of asphalt, it's comparative. It's if I put this asphalt down, how long is it going to last? So it's kind of a life cost index. And is that, is that the way the algorithm works?
It does.
Okay.
It does. Yeah. That's the reason why.
Because, I mean.
That's the reason why this.
Kind of the other issue here is we've got three-fourths of what we're spending probably is going, maybe not quite that much. But a lot of our contractors are asphalt-oriented.
Okay. You're saying, say that one more time. I'm not following that.
A lot of our contractors are asphalt-oriented. In other words, in the past, the city has done mostly concrete and the contractors have done mostly asphalt.
Okay. I'd have to go back through all the contracts. I don't know if that's true.
So when, when it comes to the contracts and this algorithm that you're using, then does that kind of tell you, I want this for, I want concrete for this stretch and asphalt for this stretch because of the wear index and so on?
So, so what I've been doing is we've just been replacing, if it's an existing concrete street, we've been replacing it with concrete. If it's asphalt, then we're using an asphalt technique. We aren't making whole switches between surface type. You know, I get a little frustrated with some of my vendors, whether it's concrete or asphalt, because they like to play me against each other. And I get a little tired of it. And, you know, I used to keep track of how much things cost. And asphalt went through the roof a few years ago. You spent less money, I'm sorry, you spent more money and got less done. Now things have changed. When's the next world crisis? When, when's that going to happen? And I got, I got bad things to say about concrete too. I'm a little frustrated with them and I've been chewing on them for almost two years now. But I guess that's, I guess that's my, my frustration with the industry. They both play each other and I haven't been switching concrete versus asphalt. So I think I know where some of these comments and who these comments are coming from.
Well, the comment's coming from me and nobody else.
Okay. I thought Mr. Schilling may have.
No, I'm just asking you straight up how the algorithm works.
Sure.
And cost, I just want to make sure that cost isn't current cost of materials, that it has to do with the life index of the, of the road.
It does. Yeah.
The other thing is, when, when you do the PCI, now some of those streets below the line, one can argue, might not be the streets that get a lot of either heavy traffic or heavy trucks. So my assumption is, again, that the, the algorithm knows that it applies a factor to that. In other words, that, one of those that might be just below the line right there might last 15 years at its current rate because it doesn't get much traffic. It's low, but it doesn't get much traffic. Therefore, the payback might be on another road that does get heavy traffic and therefore needs to be repaired quickly because the decay rate's different.
Yes.
Is that fair?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
And do we do curb at the same time?
Yes. If it is deteriorated and broken up, we do, we do curb. When I was up in the Sunset, I'm sorry, yeah, the Sunset Zoo area, there's definitely segments of curb. Same thing when Jeff is out. If there's broken and busted curb and they're working on that street, they address it as well. Last time we've really gone out, it's probably been '06, '07, we did just straight up curb projects. But we haven't done that in a long time.
And, you know, one of the things that happens is over time, you basically fill up the well with asphalt. Pretty soon, you've got a one-inch up the well with, with asphalt, pretty soon you've got a one-inch curb, so.
Yeah.
Um, how do we do that? I mean, do, is there a certain point that we have to elevate the curb or is that when we have to mill it down to?
Two, two different things that might happen. There's definitely what I call composite streets. In other words, we've placed asphalt over the top of concrete. Uh, we've tried very hard, uh, since I've been here, to reduce when we do that, because it is exactly what you're talking about. It fills the stormwater capacity of the curb. Um, it also is less of a barrier curb in case you depart from your lane and you hit the curb. A six-inch curb is gonna help deflect a tire better than a two-inch curb. That's a simple fact. Um, yeah, that's, those are really the two techniques. You neither, either have to go in, completely replace the, the street, um, and address everything down to the base and then re-establish that crown of good pavement, because there's probably a reason why that asphalt's over the top of the concrete. It's probably either bad joints, high wire, uh, those are probably the two primary ones. Um, but we try, I've tried really hard not to do too much of that. You'll notice there's been a lot of Nova chip, which is much thinner, and we try and keep it out of that gutter pan, so.
And on the, uh, two-feet asphalt-ing that you're planning on doing, that's hot, hot asphalt, not cold?
Correct. So we have to wait until Schilling's up and running, uh, in that plant, so we can get hot asphalt and then they roll that two-foot back in.
So what, isn't that, is that a contractor project or a?
No. Uh, Jeff and his crews with their skid steers and their mill machine, we do that little two-foot.
Okay, so they, somebody asphalt company delivers the asphalt and then we put it, okay.
Or, or we pick it up and then deliver it.
Cause we do mostly cold patch asphalt, right?
Definitely in the wintertime, yes. And, and again, I'm not interested, I don't wanna be like Riley County and go out and get a lay-down machine, I don't wanna get a milling machine. We do well on concrete and we do well on asphalt patches and like this two-foot technique. And that's where I wanna stay, I wanna stay in my sweet spot. I don't wanna try and be something we're not.
And, um, the amount that we have for Safe Routes to School, sidewalks and so on, was from this program was a hundred thousand dollars, right?
Per year.
Yeah. And the, the number you had, I forgot what it is, is three-thirty-seven or something?
Yeah. So we're, like I said, Commissioner, we're a little bit ahead, uh, because we've been seizing grants, um, maybe next year in nineteen and twenty. We'll just have to see where we're at, because we don't wanna get too far ahead, uh, because we're, we gotta stay within that five percent of total received revenues, so.
But we only have to stay within that for the amount that comes from tax, right?
Correct.
So anything else, we get a bonus and that's how we're able to achieve this, I said.
Yeah, yeah. Or we can use, um, uh, we can use the gas tax as a match. We've done that in the past as well. There's no restrictions on those dollar amounts or percentages either. Um, again, as long as I can s- steal money so Lawrence isn't doing it and, and we can make our community better and bring back dollars that all of us have paid, that's what we're gonna keep going after.
The last question, I know we've talked about this before and it has to do with some technology, but in this particular zone we live in, with all the freezing and thawing, you know, the joining between the concrete panels has always been an issue, because it tends to chip out. So we get these, that's why you get this rhythm as you go, go down the concrete panel street, the bump, 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 bump. Is anybody that you know of working on a solution to the, you, the, the rubber joint between or the materials that bind those panels together to make that chip out, um, less prevalent?
So the answer is yes. We've already changed some of our design standards to go to dowel baskets at those joints. Even Jeff and the repairs that they're doing now are using dowel baskets at their joints. Uh, the other thing that we're paying attention to, uh, is the, so, so I'll, I'll talk about concrete specifically. So in concrete, there's been issues in Kansas, aggregate. I know, I'm sure Neil and Kelly are gonna call you tomorrow and say Rob was speaking bad about aggregate, but I'm not, because their quarries are certified. Their large aggregate can meet the specifications that KDOT came out. Was there a problem that, um, in the state of Kansas? Absolutely. That's the reason why Kansas City communities have gone to Granite and Granite's, uh, challenged the, to get delivered into, to our community. Uh, Pennies does have it, uh, and Math is using it on some other stuff, but there is a cost associated with that. Um, and we have large aggregate that meets specifications here locally, so we're going to use it. Um, so we've paid attention to that, making sure those large aggregates and the cake mix of concrete, um, meet the standards. The other thing that we've done is ASR, Alkali Silicon Reaction. Um, so, uh, I think you all know salt water is more viscous. It'll get into pockets and, and grooves, uh, easier than fresh water that doesn't have salt. What happens when we go out and salt the streets? We make salt water and it runs to the curb. Well, that salt water also tries to get into our cracks, um, and some of the sand that gets pulled out of the Kansas River has an opposite charge than what salt water is, so it attracts it. So in order to combat that, Brian has added, our city engineer's added Class C fly ash into our mixed designs to combat that, that, that reaction, uh, and also be a plug as well. The third thing is air entrament, uh, and making sure we've got more inspectors than I've ever had before. I got four now. Uh, some of them are, uh, American Concrete Institute, uh, certified, uh, and we're trying to get them out on the job site so that we have closer to full-time inspection. I've never had full-time inspection, but we're trying to get there. So those, those are how we're trying to address the joints, Commissioner.
Good. Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't mean to get all fired up with the asphalt versus concrete, it's just those two industries beat me up and they both tell me they can walk on water and they can't. Uh, they both have their advantages and they have their disadvantages and I like both of them, but I, I am not trying to put one our business.
I wanted to bring, you just call your attention to Griffiths Drive and.
Sure.
How you are talking about, uh, milling and that's what you're probably gonna have to do to Griffiths. And I'm not sure whether there's concrete down under it or not, but.
I think there is.
It's halfway up on the curb, I know, and so there's not a lot of, uh, water drainage.
And there's not, if you go for a walk, Commissioner, if you can find any storm in, it's so long there, I'd appreciate it too. That's another deficiency out there.
Yeah, for sure. Um, over and under with regard to the total amount, so right now, sometimes our sales tax doesn't, it, it meets the monthly goal or the year and, and we're up and down right now, but if we were in a year or two ago and we would be overachieving the amount that we would have expected or budgeted for, if we make more money, uh, if we take in more money, will we be able to spend it, uh, on the streets?
Absolutely.
Because it's dedicated, okay?
Yeah.
Likewise, if it comes in under as like next year or whatever, so we will be trimming somewhere?
Correct. And that, and that's what I talked about in hiring contractors versus having employees, equipment and so forth. Um, we simply change the amount of work or scope. We reduce the number of square yards, reduce the number of tons of asphalt that we put out the bid, so that we get lower amounts and then we can, um, scale back. Like last year, Bernie budgeted, I think it was one million, uh, that was gonna come in from the sales section. I think we came in at one-point-two. Well, that two-hundred, it was two-hundred, some change, but that two-hundred thousand rolled into twenty-nineteen.
Okay, so you were able to.
It's not lost.
No, 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 I know, I just wanted to be sure that I.
Trust me.
Make sure I understood that that, what you were saying. Um, the other thing is I tried my best, um, so I know the plan is two million dollars with regard to the new sales tax, but I wanna, uh, also, I tried my best to find two million dollars in the description with regard to the, the, um, two million that we usually budget. And I looked back in the twenty-sixteen and the twenty-seventeen budget, so, um, and it was two-point-one, I think, million. And I just was having trouble getting the numbers to add up to two million dollars, um, for the existing money, not the sales tax.
You probably won't get it to add up to two million.
I won't get it to add up.
You will probably get somewhere around one-point-one million.
Yeah, I saw that, right.
So, uh, again, I'll go.
So one of the things that Rob and I have talked about is that very issue, is that, uh, right now, we're just putting that material cost, uh, that we're using with our own in-house crews. And so what we, what we need to do is turn that into a, a kind of a contractor equivalency as to what that value of product is that we're spending, uh, towards that. And so, uh, when we come back in September and we relegate this to an annual report, we'll be able to show more clearly what those are and where they come from.
So in the past, with your regular budget before sales, this new sales tax, you have used one million for contractors, one million for in-house. I mean, I'm trying to get to what we've done in the past as a continuation for the two million in that, I wanna be sure that we're, I just, I wanted to watch it go through. I, you know, when we, uh, talked about this and we said we want two million ongoing from the pattern and the way we've budgeted in the past, and then the new two million for the sales tax. So I'm just, I wanna make sure I can find.
I don't know if you're gonna find it.
As time goes on each year.
What I can show you are what we actually spent in contracts. So up here is this expenditure on special street and highway that went specifically towards either asphalt or, asphalt or concrete, uh, contractors that did work. The next slide is the amount of square yards that the street guys fix. And this is what Ron's talking about, is converting this.
Quite frankly, Rob, we can't read it.
Let, let me, let me give a, let me give a.
From this vantage point.
Let me give a quick try here, the way that, um, I think about it. And that is, in the past, for several years, we've had one-point-something, about one-point-zero of contractor maintenance. We've had one-point-zero of in-house maintenance that includes the materials and an estimate of labor based upon the installation of the, this many yards of concrete. So you had one and one, and then we added two to the contract side, not to the city side. So that's kind of the way that it, it, it's in my mind. Now for tracking, what you'll see is these same two slides and the one that Rob had was, uh, we had three-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars with the material, but that didn't include labor or anything, which would add up to the million dollars. So that's what, that's what's missing from the equation, is what is the labor cost on top of the material and equipment cost? And then you add the two million, which is the one you'll be able to track quite clearly before, because of the sales tax.
I just couldn't find it in the materials, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, I think.
I am getting my new glasses. So I can see these.
Well, it's, it's not, it's, it's lights too.
Okay, I know it.
And I think we can develop a, a couple pages in the budget book that speaks to not only that, but our, our Parks and Rec, uh, sales tax going forward also.
I think we are all really curious to follow that sales tax money on both of them. And so you might err on the side of over-explaining it to us. Thank you.
Sure.
And I, I appreciate the presentation, I think you've done a good job. And, uh, we are all so pleased in this community to have the benefit of this additional sales tax dollars. We've, uh, I, I don't know where we would be if we didn't have it. We'd be hurting this spring in ways that we might not be able to recover, so it's, it, that, uh, the community was really supportive and we, I, we all appreciate it.
One really quick thing, I didn't see that Facebook post that Commissioner Butler referred to earlier, so I just went and looked at it and that's, that's like exhibit A of what I'm talking about, right? The main argument, and I looked at all the shares and some of the comments, the main argument that people had against that was we don't spend any money keeping updated the current asphalt and concrete streets. And so I think it, a lot of people would be surprised to know how much money we do spend, and I would rather their conversation be, is that enough money or not, rather than we don't do anything? And I just think about, if that post were to happen on, and, and, you know, the business that I work for, and we had that kind of reaction, our next step would be, we know that we have a communications problem and we need to work on that communications problem. And that to me, in like, actual data, shows that there's a buying issue. And so I don't know if it's, we push out information about this through social media better, I don't know if it's, we invest in open gov software like I've talked about, I don't know what the answer is, but that's, that demonstrates that buying issue that I think that we have.
Okay, are there any other comments? Are we through this evening? All right. We're adjourned, thank you.